Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Tuesday, March twenty eight, twenty twenty three. We have just called the meeting to order. We had an executive session earlier this evening that began at six P M. We've just exited that and prepared for tonight's public meeting. As we start all meetings, if you could please join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, as we open our meetings with the reading of the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Quick opening, brief opening remarks to share really how, what the, what tonight's agenda is, is, is all about and how things will proceed, just obviously for members of the committee as well as for members of the, the public, both here in studio and that may be, that may be, that may be watching. We're going to be starting this evening in about three minutes or so with the official public hearing for the fiscal year twenty four proposed school department budget. Public hearing, we will allow any, any member of the community who wishes to address the committee on topics of next year's proposed budget to certainly do so, share ideas, thoughts, concerns. After the conclusion of that public hearing, which will take however long it may need to, after the conclusion of that, we will continue with the agenda for things like a public comment and, and, and other, other basic reports from the administration, student advisory council and so forth, and then get into the budget, uh, discussion. And then it will, it is the intention of the, of, of, of the meeting this evening that the school committee will take a vote on the, on the budget to put forward before town Then there'll be other routine business such as the subcommittee reports and so forth. But effectively, the, the primary piece of business this evening is the fiscal year twenty four budget, starting with our public hearing, which will begin in a, in a moment or, in a moment or so. Hopefully, members of the committee have, we've now had the budget presented to us on March fourteenth by the superintendent and the business administrator. We've had a discussion, uh, we've had opportunity to, to, to review it. We attended the, the first meeting out of two with the town, uh, finance committee and got there with lots of feedback and, and information and thoughts and concerns. The budget subcommittee has met twice since the meeting on the fourteenth. So there's, there's lots of, lots of, lots of information and lots of thoughts and, and some strategic needs going in to this, to this work preparing for next year. So that's just sort of, sort of opening and sort of setting the table for what, what the rest of the meeting is, is really, really to be about. Looking at the clock, it seems to be almost seven fifteen or thereabouts, seven fourteen. So I'm going to ask the, the vice chair to read the, read the motion to go into public hearing.
Move that the school committee enter into the public hearing for the public to review and comment on the school committee's budget for the Wakefield Public Schools for the period of July one, twenty twenty three to June thirty, twenty twenty four. Community members are welcome to participate in person or via Zoom access provided above during the public hearing, public participation session, and provide input and suggestions to the school committee before making their decision about next year's school spending plan.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Going into public hearing, there's a roll call vote. I could ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Farninella?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Callenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Biscavo?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Bedrow is with us on, 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 from afar, from, from not that, from not that far, but yes. So, okay, so we are now in, in public particip, excuse me, public hearing for the FY fiscal year twenty four budget. Any member of the community here in the studio have comments or concerns they'd like to share with the, with the committee and the community about next year's proposal? Okay, are there any members on Zoom, Ryan, that may like to share comments about next year's budget proposal? I see Mr. Sherman on camera, so he's with us.
It looks like Mr. Sherman has his hand raised.
Okay, great. Mr. Sherman, I, I welcome you could, you know, for public hearing purposes, please introduce yourself and, and welcome to the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dan Sherman, sixteen High Street. I am also a member of the Wakefield Finance Committee, and I thank you for this opportunity to address the full committee regarding their budget. I have a handful of comments and some questions. I understand the questions may not be, be able to be answered tonight, but perhaps they can. I've done a detailed analysis of the budget comparing twenty three to twenty four, and I've also looked at a number of different items, for example, the schools revolving accounts. So in my analysis of revolving accounts, the balances from two thousand sixteen through twenty, twenty twenty were less than three hundred thousand dollars each year, the summation of all the revolving accounts. And in twenty two, it's now at two point eight million dollars for revolving accounts. And to me, revolving accounts are always those that should be ending the year with a nominal amount to be carried over into the following year. Your estimates for twenty three is at two point five million and for twenty four is at two point seven million dollars. To me, this seems excessive. There's no reason to have almost three million dollars in revolving account balances, and I would urge the committee to reduce those balances in some fashion, either through reductions in costs, fees to the, by pay, by their parents, or use it to offset some other budget items. But two point seven, two point eight million dollars, I feel is excessive. Also, in the excessive area for your circuit breaker amounts from coming from the state, you did not use almost nine hundred and eighty-five million dollars you have in accounts that were unused for prior years. Those monies should either be returned to the town or increase our free cash or some other manner. But up until the last couple of years, these circuit breaker amounts were used mostly in entirety, but to have a million dollars from previous years sitting around does not make any sense to me. So between the two accounts, you have close to four million dollars of cash sitting someplace, not earning much interest, and it could be used for better purposes than sitting in an account. The other, the other analysis I did was comparing your budget between, that was given to us and the town in the spring of twenty three to what we have in twenty four before us. And I noticed a number of things that seemed a bit odd, and I will start for those that want to follow along with page seven of your budget. If you look at page seven, it shows all the step increases along with the bachelor's, master's, master's thirty, master's forty-five, and Ph D. I compared though that table to the previous year. In the previous year, there were no entries for steps one through four. It was all zero for all category, for all lanes. For twenty four, there's almost three million dollars in salaries that are showing up for steps one through five. That's all brand new. So it's roughly, I'm guessing about fifty new employees who are coming in. The total increase for that time period for one to the other is about three hundred, three point one five percent increase. If you're bringing in forty to fifty brand-new people with steps between one and five, they, there should be a much smaller increase in the total payroll than three, three point one five percent, because these people are coming in with only one, two, three years of service versus the other people. And I find it hard to believe that last year you had nobody with steps one through four. So something is just off, either last year's table or this year's table, does not make any sense to me. I went further, and if you look on page thirty-six of your report, just to follow along, page thirty-six starts with the Doyle School. And the Doyle School budget, as, as you'll see there, for instruction services is one point six seven four million dollars, and on page thirty-seven, the grand total is one million eight sixty. If you look at that budget in fiscal year twenty three, what we're, what the town, what the finance committee all received last year shows the Doyle School budgets of one point five six two million, a difference of a hundred and twelve thousand for instructions, and one point seven seven five million for the total, a difference of eighty-six thousand dollars. So at some point between the spring of two thousand twenty-two and today, the fiscal year twenty-three budget for Doyle School increased eighty-five thousand dollars. Now, I did not see any kind of a new, you know, budget sheet. I don't know if anybody else did. The finance committee did not see any kind of a new budget, but for the Doyle School, what was fiscal year twenty-three increased eighty-five thousand dollars sometime in ensuing months after the spring. I thought that was very curious, so I continued looking at Doyle Bear, Greenwood, Walton, all the way down. And what I found is throughout all of those budgets, all the way through the district, the budgets for all those categories increased in total over seven hundred thousand dollars between the spring of twenty-two and today. No mention as to why, what's going on. So then I said, well, the total budget for the schools did not change at roughly forty-seven million dollars, so what happened? So the seven hundred and five thousand dollars was made up by increases in the circuit breaker grants and revolving funds offsets. So by increasing those offsets, the total did not change, but the budgets, budgets for like the Doyle School, Woodville, the district, all went up substantially more than what was advertised in the spring. So if I look at the total, it's a six point five percent increase from fiscal year twenty three as presented back in the spring versus the twenty-four amount that you're proposing. So it really makes it difficult for those of us who are trying to analyze what you're requesting when you change fiscal year twenty-three partway through the year. This makes it difficult, and I would encourage you to somehow notify the town modifications that you make mid-year on your budget so that we get apples to apples. I went further and looked at the district amounts for twenty-three last spring versus twenty-three today and what you're, what you're requesting in fiscal year twenty-four. And it's not a two percent increase as shown on pages fifty through fifty-three. It's a six point eight percent increase over what was given to us last spring, not two percent. So it's, it's painting a rosier picture than it actually is. My final discussion is in terms of the total of five point two two percent. That is not sustainable. It is excessive. Based on our analysis of our income, the town is going to receive roughly three point seven percent increase in income over the year, and based on our forecast right now that I have, and I'm rosier than Steve Mayo and Kevin Gill at Town Hall, I'm forecasting a deficit of two million dollars. And we run out of money in fiscal year twenty-six. The town's free cash will be gone in two years if you stick with this five point two two percent increase in your budget request from twenty-three to twenty-four. Under Mr. Mayo's projections, we have a three million dollar deficit and will run out of money in fiscal year twenty-five. Two years and we're done. We have no free cash. We'll have to cut other services extensively. So what I'm requesting is for you to reduce this budget. I had forecasted a four percent increase of the schools. That would be a wonderful spot for you to get to, and I'm encourage you to sharpen your pencil, make some adjustments, reduce your revolving account balances from almost three million dollars to something like three hundred thousand, which is the historical norm, and to use that million dollars of your circuit breaker money that you did not spend in the last couple of years on something else like reducing its budget. So those are my questions, those are my comments, and I really appreciate the time and you're listening to what I have to say. Thanks again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sherman. Thank you for, for sharing and certainly thank you for the analysis that you, that you have, that you have put together on your, on, on your review. Ryan, are there other met folks on Zoom who would hear for the public hearing?
No one else has raised a hand yet, but if anybody would like to speak, please do speak up.
Yes, because there doesn't seem to be anyone other than Mr. Sherman, so if there's no one prepared to raise their hand, we're, we're going to close the hearing and, and move to our other discussions. Okay, so seeing, seeing no further comments within the, the public hearing. Madam Vice Chair, may you make a motion to close the hearing?
Move that the school committee exit the public hearing.
Second.
Second. Motion made in second, roll call vote. Judy?
Mr. Bedrow?
Yes.
Mr. Farninella?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Callenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Biscavo?
Yes.
Very good. Now, back in the regular meeting, if I could go back to item number, number seven, which we had originally thought we may be able to do prior to the public hearing, which is the consent agenda, so we can dispense with the consent agenda. Amy?
Yes. Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three school committee meeting and accept the minutes of the March sixteen, twenty twenty-three and the March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three school committee finance and facility subcommittee meeting, the minutes of the March twenty, twenty twenty-three school committee student services subcommittee meeting, and the minutes of the March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three school committee policy and communications subcommittee meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second and any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, item number ten is our, is, is our regular public comment period. Any member of the community wish to address the committee on any matter, certainly budgetary or not, they're welcome to do so at this time. Please, sir, if you could come up to the microphone, introduce yourself and, and, and welcome.
Hey, darling, my name is Joshua Austin, I live at five twenty Water Street. I come here tonight with my wife to try and learn a little bit more about the safety protocol that goes on within our schools for our children. We've seen what's going on in our country right now, and as a parent, I'd like to get more involved to find out what the protocols are and, you know, maybe bring up a discussion one night about how to make it better. Is it, are we all comfortable with the protocol as it sits right now, or can we make changes? Because I feel as if, you know, everywhere in this country, we're trying to protect our children and it's not working. So I come here tonight as a concerned parent to, to learn more. And I don't know if we have the time to really get there tonight, but I wanted to stop in and show face and, you know, maybe one night we can have a discussion in regards to that. That's all I really actually have.
Very good. Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Sherman.
I appreciate your time, and how does it go about, like, if I wanted, you know, to bring up that discussion in the committee meeting one night, how do, how does someone go about that?
So we could certainly initiate that. You and I could have an email exchange as we did earlier today. We could follow up on, on the conversation, and, and we could certainly have that. That is a discussion that the committee has at least once a year. We, we, we had, I forget the last time, but we had, uh, the police chief and other public safety officials were here to, to talk, to talk about that. So it's certainly something that I'm sure we all share as a, as a, as a parent and all of us, as parents and family members certainly share that concern. It's not a concern at all that is lost on us.
Absolutely.
So I certainly, I'm sure I speak, thank you for coming forward tonight. Certainly the news of the last forty-eight hours or so with the loss, other loss of life with our, some friends from Tennessee, it's terrible, it's terrible what is, what is happening with violence and, and, and school, uh, school occurrences. So it's, it's always an appropriate conversation and it's always appropriate to, to have us make sure that we're, that we're, that we're aware and on top of it and staying, staying in, in, in line with expectations, not only of parents but of staff and, and everyone that enters, and enters and participates in a public building, school or otherwise.
Absolutely, as parents, you know, we're not in school, we don't get to see the procedures that take place, you know, what happens in a situation. We don't know as parents, like, what actually happens, you know? Didn't really happen as much when we were children, you know, the violence that goes on. So as a parent, I would like to learn more about it and learn the procedures that goes on, you know? How often these procedures are practiced, you know? Can we improve them? Are they, are they good as they stand now? So I do appreciate you guys' time, and maybe we can speak exchange.
Yeah, we'd happily do that, because this is not, this exchange, I, I don't, I, my, my humanity is kicking in, if I could be so, because of the nature of this issue and the, and the heartfeltness, but this is not the exchange that we have in the, in, in the formality of, of the purpose of, of the public comment period. So I'm trying to wa, balance a line between being very respectful of incredibly important topic that you're raising with not engaging in the subject, it's not on tonight's agenda, it would be, we cannot discuss that, there are reading law requirements and lots of other things, but please know that it's a very important topic for us. We will absolutely be, be open to it in the future. As my, as I shared with you in email earlier today, don't hesitate to reach out to your, your child's principal and speak directly about what's going on in, in your school, but, but, but please, we'll, we will stay in touch.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Art to the superintendent's office, of course, Dr. Lyons is always available.
Yes. All right, thank you very much.
My humanity took, made, made the better of me, folks, so please, someone's going to come in and want to talk about something and have this exchange, and it's, I'm going to come back and fight me in the, so anyways, but thank you, Mr. Austin. Any other members of the public wish to address the committee on public comment at this time? Seeing none, okay, moving on, student advisory council, do we have any, oh, we do! Hello! Item number eleven.
Okay, so for academics, grade ten students are participating in the ELA MCAS today and will finish up tomorrow. Term three also ends on Friday. Students in need of additional support with homework projects or test preparation can drop to the, drop in on library hours Monday through Thursdays to work with National Honor Society peer tutors from two oh five to two forty-five. For other school news and timely happenings, Thursday, seniors will take part in the credit for life. This is an opportunity for seniors to learn how to create budget, plan for their future financial endeavors, and successfully navigate life's unexpected adventures. For extracurricular activities, winter sports wrapped up last week, and Wakefield High School had another successful season. The boys' basketball and girls' basketball, boys' hockey, and boys' swim team all won their league championship. Both the girls' basketball and boys' hockey teams made it deep into the state tournaments, all the way to the Elite Eight state tournament. The boys' and girls' indoor track teams had successful indoor season once again, with a couple Willy Field runners making it all the way to the Nationals. Spring sport tryouts began last week, and our spring teams have been working on, working hard over the past week and a half, and games will start this weekend.
That's terrific. Thank you very much. It's, isn't this also, did you say that, that this is an MCAS week, is it, is it not as well? Did you mention that? I missed if you did. Yeah.
Yeah, MCAS is today and tomorrow for tenth graders.
Yeah, great. Any questions for our student representative? Great, well, thank you very much for your, for, for coming tonight and sharing. You're welcome to, to stay or you're welcome to continue on with your homework, I'm sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Item number twelve, chairs' comments, I'm going to make those brief and just introduce one topic just for the sake of putting it out there so we all have an appreciation for what's, what's coming in the next couple of meetings. As we discussed in, in, when last summer and last, early last fall, when we renegotiated the superintendent's contract and put forward the, the evaluation process, as well as the superintendent sharing his goals for fiscal year twenty-three, part of, part, part of that process is sort of a, a mid-year self-assessment and a mid-year review. So at, at meeting, either, either one of the next two, superintendent and I haven't landed on how those meetings will need to look like yet, but certainly upcoming will be, so this is sort of a preview for us to be thinking about that, that we haven't probably had that on our, on our radar screen in a bit, we've been so busy with other, other items, but, so coming up on, on a future meeting, either one of the next two, the superintendent will share a media review and self-assessment for us to then provide appropriate comment, both publicly and individually, as we had, you know, sort of outlined last fall. Okay, are there any questions? Seeing that, okay, so just, just have that on our radar screen as a, as an upcoming event. We just didn't want to all of a sudden appear on an agenda and, and people say, oh, yeah, I remember that. Okay. Item number thirteen, fiscal year twenty-four budget discussion among the committee. I broke that out for the sake of the agenda into pretty much three parts, budget updates, discussions and recommendations from the superintendent, business administrator, and then comments and follow-up discussions that may come from the subcommittee members as well as the full committee. So I ask Dr. Lyons.
Thank you very much, Mr. Markham. So what we'll be doing this evening is we'll be kind of revisiting the information that we shared on the, on the, in our last meeting in our proposal. It's, it's unfortunate, I wish we could have given this meeting before Mr. Sherman spoke, because I think a lot of his questions will be addressed in the slides above. So we, we want to start off straight away just by sharing the goals of this presentation. We want to outline budget priorities, explain- goals of this presentation. Um, we wanna outline budget priorities, explain proposed, uh, budget priorities and, and kind of why, why they are priorities. We wanna share, we wanna look at forecasting for FY twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six. We also wanna talk about the collaborative feedback that we have received from the finance subcommittee, which is a subcommittee of this larger committee, um, and also from our FinCom liaisons. And so Dan is part of FinCom, who spoke earlier, um, but he's not one of, not part of one of the liaison groups or that smaller group. Um, and they've been kind of instrumental in giving us feedback, very similar to what Dan described as well. And then there'll be time at the end for questions and answers. So in terms of budget priorities, for FY twenty-four, um, we continue to create opportunities for intervention, right? So we, in all of our survey information that we do, we get feedback in different, different ways, different forms that state continuously that kids need help during the school day and also outside of the school day. Um, and that's before school and after school. So we've really thought about how we're, we're providing intervention, uh, both before school starts. You can see that in our acceleration academy with our kindergartners, but also how we're doing intervention during the school day, especially at elementary. Um, and we're also looking at extending the school day with Wakefield Academy. Um, we're continuing to look at opportunities for points of acceleration. And what, what I mean by points of acceleration, we've talked a little bit about accelerating students in math at the middle school. We're continuing to do that, but we're also thinking about is, are there ways for us to accelerate students at elementary, um, and also at the high school? So more to follow on that. So we also wanna look at kind of the, kind of, you know, academic, social and emotional behavioral successes of our students, right? By supporting, um, a new one point O F T grant-funded adjustment counselor at the high school. So this is a new grant-funded counseling position, which is, we are in partnership with the Board of Health, um, and also with Melrose Public Schools and Stoneham Public Schools. And what we've done is we've gotten grant funding for an additional adjustment counselor at the high school for three years. Now, we're, we're super pleased about this because in the last five years, we've, this is our third adjustment counselor that we're bringing on. We're bringing on different structures to support students at, especially at the high school level, uh, but at other levels as well. And so with the social, emotional needs and the mental health needs of students, we feel like that's critical. We're also looking at adding in this budget, a one point O, um, teacher to support English language learners. Um, that number has increased district-wide. When I started here eight years ago, all students that had English language learner needs, they used to say, called the acronym at that time was ESL, um, students would all go to one elementary school. We've now created services at all of our schools because our numbers are so high. Um, and this is, this is an addition that we're looking for in this budget. We're also looking to support, um, intentionally support special education program development to help students as they transition. Um, we're looking at adding a, a one point O at the high school for the expansion of our language-based program. And we're looking at trying to do these in budget-neutral ways if and when possible. So additional budget priorities are really kind of recruiting, retaining and developing outstanding teachers. This is a labor market, right? And so right now in this market, either you're be, you're recruiting and looking for hard-to-fill spaces, or you're being recruited, right? And so, um, we have been very fortunate to be able to hire some exceptional teachers, um, and also to continue to support our teachers that are doing exceptional work day in and day out here. But this is a huge priority in this budget, right? And so I can't understate that. We're starting negotiations for a new contract this year and this budget would support that. So we're looking to continue preventative maintenance on our buildings that we've started. And we, we also wanna be clear that, that this budget that we're asking, um, the committee to support, you know, funds a staff of six hundred and two employees in seven bargaining units and we're serving three thousand three hundred and sixty-eight students. So I highlighted that intentionally in yellow, different than the last slide deck that I shared, because when I got the updated numbers, the old number that I had there was from October, well, the October one report. And so we're up forty students right now, forty, forty-two students, right? And, and as we start to look at, um, our kindergarten numbers next year, right now, as we're looking at kindergarten, all of our classrooms are full across the district. We're also looking at the need to open an additional pre-K classroom. Um, and so that's something that we're working on right now and more to follow there. So, um, you know, it's the old adage, if you build it, they will come, right? So we're, we're in a good place and I, and I wanna, I don't want people to miss the increase of students that we're, we're looking at right now. So we talk all the time about knowns and unknowns, right? We budget for what is known and we try to be prepared and really let data guide us in regard to unknowns or challenges. Human resources and personnel are, is a, is a known, right? It is, it is a first priority in this budget. Um, the need to create schedules to provide increased opportunities for intervention, acceleration and supplemental support, um, is also a, a need in this, in this budget. We need to prioritize time for professional development for teachers to collaborate, to further develop internal capacity and programs, right? And so, and you'll see more about that when we talk about special ed. We need to maintain and possibly increase technology supports to maintain our initial investment in new student management system power school. And we're also looking at upgrading Munis, which is our financial management system this year. So there's more to follow there. The unknowns, um, continue to be labor, right? And so it's hard to, we, we have a particularly hard time like other districts and other places across the state, uh, filling certain positions, right? And so, and when we get people that, sometimes when we interview and we find the most kind of able person or competitive person to take the job, um, they come at a premium because they have the experience. And so in the way that our contract is aligned, you heard Dan ask questions or make comments about the structure. So there are steps and columns depending on your education background that moves you over and, and depend on, depending on your years of experience, that moves you down. And that is a traditional, um, traditional salary table in all teacher contracts, but more to follow there. So the in-district needs for programs, so out-of-district costs. So we did share earlier in the year in forecasting that out-of-district tuitions scheduled to increase eleven to fourteen percent this year. That's the difficult news. The positive news is that the number of students that we're looking at out-of-district has decreased. And that's due to programming that we've created in district. And I think that's a direct result of the amazing work of our teachers and also the leadership of our new special education director. Um, additional increase in cost for goods and services, food, everything that has increased in our day-to-day lives is also incre, increased in regard to the day-to-day operations of schools. Food service, for example, is one of those things, right? And, and we put here, um, one of the big drivers is will, will there be funding to support meals as we have for the, the last few years? So we're hearing now that we're gonna, that, that state funding will be available to support, uh, meals as we have for the last few years, which, and we're pleased about that, but we don't know how long that's gonna continue. Challenges for FY twenty-five and twenty-six, uh, school safety, right? Um, we brought this up in, on a few weeks ago. School safety and cyber safety, right? Um, the level of sophistication and the way that people are accessing information and, and getting very kind of sensitive information is something that we all need to be attentive to. And that's a project that we're working on with our technology director. There'll be more information to follow there. Other challenges are really addressing kind of the, the achievement, equity, counseling and opportunity gaps that, that exist post-COVID, right? Right now, you know, we had a conversation ahead of this meeting. We were talking about just in a post-COVID environment, everybody is working kind of triple time to meet the kind of expanded needs of students across the district. So again, human resources is, will be a challenge for the next few years. Building a new high school, we're pleased, uh, that we got the support of the district to build a new high school. This will help us address our accreditation issue and also our challenge with ADA accessibility. We do need to continue to increase opportunities for early college and internships, and that's a project that the high school administration is working on. We need to continue to develop a content, comprehensive plan for special education and English language learners, because these are drivers, right? These are drivers where you need to be prepared and districts that are prepared to welcome students and, and their needs, right? And it's not, you know, we welcome people in, we, we kind of meet them where they're at and, and then kind of we go from there. And, and more times than not, we have really remarkable success, but that all starts with our teachers and our schools. Um, and we need to continue acceleration academies, um, and tutoring programs through Wakefield Academy. So the two positions that we're looking at in the budget this year that would be funded through the budget, um, is an EL position and a special education position, right? For the language-based program at the high school. We shared this on the fourteenth. Um, this is a new slide, right? I, I wanted to be clear in our communication, right? The finance and facility subcommittee, this budget is a school committee budget, right? So they approve the budget that we are, we are proposing. And so, but in doing that, we take very careful guidance, not only from the subcommittee, but also from our finance committee liaisons. And so, um, and, and what we've, we're learning and what we're working on is, right, we're looking at assessing possible reductions in the current budget that was proposed on the fourteenth. Um, we're looking to gain clarity in reporting. So, you know, what was highlighted in some of the comments tonight is, is some of the information as it is presented is difficult to understand. And if there's different ways that we need to present that, um, either to anyone, any of the committees that we're working with in town, any of our partners, um, we need to really work on that. That's kind of something that, that is a priority. Um, we need to determine if at the end of the year, if we have funds left over, if we can share monies back with the town, right? And so with the, with the COVID-related funds that have come in in the last few years, um, I know the town has, has gotten quite a bit of funding in that area, but so have we, right? And so, and it has changed kind of the landscape for some of our programs, but these monies are one-time monies, right? So when those funds go away, um, those funds are not and should not be used, and we are not planning to use them for, um, for personnel, right? So because to do that, when grants go away, if you can no longer fund the position, you would lose the position. So that's something that we're, we're trying to be mindful of, right? And so, you know, we talked about communicating knowns and unknowns to forecast and really the important bullet is, is right at the bottom right here. So, um, in the proposal that we're making this evening, we are kind of aligning the proposed budget request to equal fifty million ninety thousand one hundred and one dollars, which is the five point two-two percent increase that we're looking at. But to get to the five point two-two, this is, this is the amount of money that we feel that we need to, to operate the Wakefield Public Schools and FY twenty-four. But to get there, we're looking at a request of forty-nine million five hundred and ninety thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars, which is a four point one seven percent increase. But what the, the plan is for us to work with the town to kind of realign funds between our revolving accounts and our grant funding, maybe through ARPA, to, to come up with another five hundred thousand dollars to offset the, the ask. So we're, we're kind of decreasing by the amount of money, um, in ways that was suggested earlier, um, by one of the members of the finance committee. So this is the special education programming chart. So you'll see here kind of, um, these are future dates. So this is forecasting ahead for FY twenty-five and twenty-six. Uh, I think that in all of our conversations, I think that this is a, it's a simple chart, but I think it's a really important chart because it differentiates FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four, right? First of all, these are, it says enrollment. These are October one numbers, so it shows a decrease. We're actually, um, above that and I showed that earlier. So we no longer have a negative in that space. The foundation budget, which is what the state kind of requires, um, or suggests that the communities fund their schools at, right? And so you'll see here that they're suggesting in the foundation budget for Wakefield specifically, they're suggesting a, a two million dollar increase or a five point one percent increase, right? We were suggesting five two-two. The state is at five one. Um, and so you have the required district, district contribution. And this is really an important piece. And I think that this has been lost in conversation, right? Chapter seventy-eight, um, has increased this year by just shy of seven hundred thousand dollars. Okay? And so, um, this seven hundred thousand dollar increase goes to the town. Doesn't come directly to the schools. It goes to the town, but that's an offset. If that doesn't need to be funded by the town, it does increase free cash. And so, um, and, and will help the town greatly. And that's an important piece here, right? So in addition to our, our kind of, uh, modified proposal that I highlighted on the last slide and this additional information that we're, we're hearing, um, so we think that that's a very positive outlook for the town. So, um, we think between this information, the adjustment of five hundred thousand dollars and other information that we have, we think that, you know, Dan, I chuckled because Dan uses the word rosy. Um, I, I think that things, um, the way that we're budgeting here and what we're suggesting in regard to our proposal, I think we're in a dramatically better place in regard to our proposal and what we're looking to do in the Wakefield Public Schools. So, um, so this is just kind of a breakout. It, it differentiates FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four. And, and we're pleased here to talk about, you know, contractual services between twenty-three and twenty-four, um, and materials and supplies. These are essentially level-funded. I wanna be clear about that, right? So we're essentially level-funding two-thirds of, of our budget, right? So these are our three cost centers, personnel, contractual services, materials and supplies. So materials and supplies in FY twenty-three, contractual services in FY twenty-three are essentially the same in FY twenty-four. The increase is really in, in kind of personnel, uh, the personnel line. And, and that is as we described earlier. This is a, a, a labor-centered budget and, and that's by design. Um, and so again, the total expenditure, what we're looking for is for support, um, or the committee to vote on a budget of fifty million ninety thousand one hundred and one dollars. And, and the, those funds will be made up by forty-nine million five hundred ninety dollars, um, five hundred and ninety thousand dollars, um, plus the five hundred thousand that I described earlier. Am I missing anything?
No, I think you're spot on. And I just, I would like to also highlight the number that the state is saying that Wakefield should be growing at. And that's really important because that's based on last October ones numbers, even when we saw a slight decrease. So even the state now is saying, we know your enrollment might've been decreasing a year ago, but we're seeing such changes in the enrollment in Wakefield Public Schools and certain subgroups, English, English language learners, um, students of a certain um, economic disadvantage. So because of those subgroups have changing in Wakefield, they are saying that Wakefield should be growing at over five percent. That, along with the chapter seventy money, has an increase and that's due to the formula. So that was sort of, that's in line with, with what the budget is asking for.
And, and if you do a, a look back, if you look back at our prior years, if you look at how grant, ARPA grant money and, and COVID money has come into the budget, we're at over five percent, right? It's just not represented that way in the tax levy, which we, we think is good, because what that does is it increases free cash for the town. And I think it's, it's kind of, it works. Um, on the town side, it works for other departments in the town and, and we wanna be good partners in this work, right? So that's where we're at. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody might have at this moment. Mr. Fonda Noah?
So Mr. Sherman, um, talked about the school revolving accounts
Yep.
And how much money and that we had a very big balance in those revolving accounts.
Yeah.
And, um, forgive me, I'm not a math teacher and have never had to make my, my own budget. But looking, looking at this, um, we're taking five hundred thousand with this proposed budget tonight.
Yeah.
We're taking five hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Correct? Uh, is that coming out of what, what, these revolving accounts that Mr. Sherman was
So we're gonna, we're gonna work with the town So we're going to work with the town on this. So the town has, we have ARPA money that's coming to us as we've planned the budget. And so, between our ARPA funds and between revolving accounts, we're going to kind of allocate $500,000 that will be coming. Yes, sir.
Right. The reason why I ask is he suggested that 4% increase would be a more sustainable budget.
Yep.
But, you know, as this is proposed, if we take that $500,000 off, it would only be a 4.17% increase?
Yes, sir.
So that seems more in line with what Mr. Sherman was proposing as a financial recommendation.
That's correct.
Correct? Okay.
I also just want to chime in a little bit about what a revolving account is. And I know there was a comment made about $2.7 million left over in revolving accounts. But Circuit Breaker is, just to be clear, Circuit Breaker is not a revolving account. It is a state-funded program to help offset out-of-district placements for our special ed services, that we can't fill those needs here in Wakefield, so we must pay tuitions to send out a district. So that is a reimbursement program based on those tuitions. And the conversation about having money left in certain fiscal years needs to be addressed because, in essence, what that account does is any balance left in one year carries to the next. So when I report to you every month about what those balances are, those are cumulative balances. So you'll see, I think right now we're at 1.3 in Circuit Breaker. That goes back to fiscal '19. So that carries forward, and those monies are used next year to offset those tuitions. And then it moves again. You'll get a reimbursement every year, which is what's represented in the budget. That also, I also wanted to address that, 2.7 includes food services, which in essence is a revolving account, but that has state-mandated regulations for that that we cannot touch. That is right now being generated purely from the state and feds based on reimbursements for meals served. We cannot use that for anything else other than the food service program to pay for salaries and supplies. That being said, we also need to keep at least three to four months of reserves at all time in that account based on whether or not the state can reimburse in a timely manner to make sure we can pay those salaries. So we just need to kind of drill down on what those revolving accounts are and what the regulations are for maintaining some of those balances. I know some of them look really large and really healthy, but there's a plan for that and there's a reason for that. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Yeah, the state-funded food that you had said, for food-
Food services.
Of the 2.7 million, how much is that?
That right now is 1.3.
1.3, okay. That is a big chunk. That's a really big chunk.
And so, and I just want to be clear here. So the, we, so you will see in that cell, it will say, you know, receipts in, zero, because kids are not paying for lunch right now.
Correct, yeah.
So, but you will also see in that state and federal aid has increased by almost 40% in that area. So that larger balance is represented in that state and federal aid line.
Yeah.
Okay? But other revolving accounts, fine and performing arts, you know, we're not going to take money out of fine and performing arts and kind of move that into salaries. We're not doing it, right? And so, you know, athletics, right? We're not taking money out of athletics and moving that into the budget, right? And so, so we're trying to do this as thoughtfully as we can, but also we want to communicate well around this idea of anytime you create an offset. So this year will be the fourth year or maybe fifth year in a row that we've had grant funding or additional funds that are added to our budget to kind of prop up the budget. Because when you add the monies that are added, that's the actual cost of what it is to run the budget, right? And or run the schools. And so, that's really important, right? Because this isn't, it wasn't done once, we're on year five now, right? And so, and we have a commitment for year six, so we're just-
And I'd like to speak to that too, Doug, because when the budget is looked at, right? The budget book is a document that is an all-funds document. And I think that needs to be clear because it's not just looking at one funding source. This is a document that explains everyone in the district, everyone on payroll, everyone from contractual services, every supply that's being purchased. And it's represented in the budget book by departments. But what it shows by every line in every school is every salary that is being paid for that school by that DESI function code: teaching services, paraprofessionals, custodials. But what that doesn't also represent at the bottom is all the funds to run that school. But at the final summary page shows the revenues to pay for that. So we pay over $1 million of salaries from revolving accounts. So those programs we just talked about pay for the salaries to run those programs. So when you look at district-wide services, the salaries on that page might go up, but it's offset by the revolving account revenue to pay for those salaries. So I just want to make that clear because when you're comparing line to line, budgets to budgets, year to year, you might see fluctuations, particularly for us, for the past three years, we've had SRF funds that have had, we've all talked about the 10 COVID positions that were funded by SRF funds that are no longer in this budget, but then they had to go somewhere. If we kept a position, it either went to a grant, if we applied for a grant, or it went to the local budget. Then you'll see revolving account salaries, and then you'll see the local appropriation is the final line. So I just really want to stress that because when it shows that everything to run the district is X on page 54, I think it actually totals about $56 million, but when you offset all the other funding sources, grants, revolving, Circuit Breaker, you get down to what we're actually asking the town to fund. Now, I also want to address, there was a comment made about other people on certain steps and lanes this year that they weren't on those steps and lanes last year. Well, what we have in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, if you're a teacher, you are either on a step or a lane depending on your years of service or your academic achievements. If you've got your master's degree, if you have any credits after those degrees, you will move a column. In every budget document that I put together, I'll tell you that it's either 60 to 65 teachers that are moving between columns. They give us their intent, it's called, it's called their intent to advance. They're taking classes, they know that they're going to get their master's degree, so they're going to move from the bachelor's column to the master's or master's plus 30. So right now, we're looking for 24. I have 65 teachers who are looking to intend to advance. So we're budgeting for that. We're budgeting as if that's actually happening. Now, what happened last year? I got an intent to advance from 60 people. Guess what? Not everybody was able to complete all those courses, so not all the movements happened. It's not a linear one-for-one. We have to budget as if everything happens, but it doesn't. I just hope that clarifies a little bit of that.
Happy to answer other questions.
If I could, just add to the conversation around the revolving funds because it has been, I think it has been a healthy conversation, and I think it's been fairly open between, you know, our meetings here as well as the sharing that we've had with the Finance Committee liaisons, as well as the FinCom meeting last, well, two weeks ago, I guess it was. And I think it's important to note, it's on, the revolving fund summary is on page 16 of the budget book for anyone that may choose to refer to that. But just to add a particular point, because there's some educational value to, I think, realizing that the majority of these funds, if not the vast majority of them, are not free to use at our discretion. These funds were created under state law for a particular purpose. The, a couple of examples that both Doug and Christine use, let's pick on the athletic revolving fund, right? Parents pay fees, they pay athletic fees. There are gate receipts, there are other proceeds, there's fundraising and contributions that are made on behalf of booster organizations and other things that are given to the school district for a particular purpose. I mean, the athletics is a really good one, it's representative, but all of them are in that particular way. So it's really important to note, even though there may be high balances from one year to the next in revolving funds, we don't have the discretion that others may think we have over the ability to move some of those funds around and apply them to things outside of their intended purpose. We do have some odd-discretion in some areas, building rental, Wakefield Academy might be two areas, I think, over the course of time. And I know when both of these funds were established, we are able to charge into those accounts some building-related expenses, custodial expenses, maybe IT costs that relate to the operation of the building that allow Wakefield Academy to exist in the buildings that they do. So there is a rationale, but it still has to be within the confines of the purpose of why the fund was created and the purpose of the revenue by which, or, excuse me, from which we received. Was it a parent making a contribution for a student fee or so forth? So there's been lots, I think the conversation has been healthy, and I think anything we can do to help answer more and more questions and to learn and get more and more feedback is always healthy. I think a part of the conversation needs to be that I don't think a parent who's paying an athletic fee would expect that fee to be used for anything other than to support that their son or daughter is playing. I think that's almost obvious, right? And the same thing would go for all of the other revolving funds and the purposes of them. So, and I think it's, just to highlight again and to thank Doug and Christine for making these points even more clear, you know, we are not unaware, we've been planning and we've been talking, especially in the Finance Facility Subcommittee, as well as the full committee, of course, since the, you know, since probably the early days of COVID, certainly the middle days of COVID, that we knew that the funding was going to expire. And we are now, you know, facing some of those times. So I think it's more than reasonable that the administration has put forward a budget that they believe that they need to operate the district. We've discussed it in finance, we've also discussed it in labor relations as we're negotiating with teachers. We don't have a crystal ball, we don't know where we're going to land with that, but we need to be mindful and respectful and plan for that accordingly. So I think, you know, my two cents, just in tapping this off and then obviously asking others to chime in, is that this sort of, this sort of approach by hearing feedback from town administration, from town hall, from the town administrator's office, and the town accountant, as well as obviously our Finance Committee colleagues, it seems that the proposal that we have or the other, you know, to, how to best address and land on a common square that is in the best interest of the town. Because at the end of the day, right, we are the town. As goes the town, goes the school district. So I think it may be in our best interest to ask for what we need, to advocate and lobby for what we need, which is the bottom line of this exercise, but at the same time to be able to apply the resources that are within our discretion to meet some of the financial stressors that the town may be facing as well. So I think- So, any other member of the Finance Subcommittee want to chime in?
Yeah, Tom, if I, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, I have questions, not as a, from like a Finance Committee. Just, so go ahead, Mike, if you want to speak.
No, you go, please.
Okay.
Go ahead, you go first.
I just want to be clear, if we go to vote, what we're voting on because as of yesterday, the budget increase was going to be 5.22. But now we're breaking it down, right? So we're saying it's 4.17 from the tax levy, is that what it's called? And then, and then we're going to make up the difference, the 1% with this $500,000 from revolving accounts. Is that correct now?
And our budget's like, yeah.
Yes. So if you, even if you take a peek at the motion, the motion has the ask to the town. So we're effectively asking town meeting to allow us to spend a certain amount of money.
Right.
How it's broken down and how we land there is the exercise that will follow, but very much will look like what you see in front of you and what's represented in the budget book. But the ask that we're bringing forward is still the $50,090,191 is still the ask that we're asking us to be allowed to spend next year. So it's still an increase of 5.22% from this year's spending to next year's spending, but what we're asking of the town to contribute is $500,000 less.
Well, that's what I'm mostly concerned with, is how much people's taxes are going to be. I mean, I thought the 5% was particularly high, given the environment we're in right now. So I just wanted to understand that because all along we were saying we couldn't spend this revolving accounts, and now we're saying, well, maybe we can spend $500,000. So I wasn't sure where that, what you're saying, ARPA too, so.
It would principally be coming out of the Wakefield Academy, which is, which has a fairly high balance.
Okay.
And I think it's important to note that some of the work that was done by the administration in the past week or so really has been a look at what are the needs of Wakefield, what has been the needs of Wakefield Academy historically over the last handful of years? And make sure that we are mindful and responsible for those, but not to go below those needs, as well as to plan for future needs, the future types of services that parents and the Wakefield Academy, you know, leadership wants to provide and needs to provide: social, emotional services that are presently not as vibrant within Wakefield Academy. So there's a piece of growing there, while at the same time, some flexibility in that account.
So, then I also want to talk about head count because I think that what we get from the state in Chapter 70 is based on our head count, and you're saying the snapshot was taken-
October 1.
It's always October 1. So now that October 1 is going up, it'll affect next year's Chapter 70. It's a year behind.
Okay. Because one, if you go back, one said minus 45, but then you had said it was 40, so we-
It's also not a flat head count. It has more to do with what sort of subgroups that the student population has to do with. Like, a majority of Chapter 70 funding in our district is somewhat in the Woodville District. It's a more socio-economically diverse area. And so, that tends to be where that-
That's where we get, like, chap, that's different money.
Well, that's the dollar value within Chapter 70.
Exactly. But that's what I mean when we're talking head count, it's not when you see like the entire enrollment might ebb and flow a few percentage points, that doesn't directly relate to Chapter 70, sort of.
Well, it does a little bit. So on October 1, we provide, we provide actually a head count. Every October 1, we provide a head count, the number of students that are enrolled in the district, literally on that day. And that's, every school district in the state provides that, and that drives, or that's one of the drivers of the Chapter 70 formula. The populations, the student populations that you're speaking about drive much of the funding of that formula. But I think your question, Amy, the, we were down on October 1, last October 1 of 2022, we reported 45 students less than we did on October 1, 2021. Follow me?
Yeah.
So that's where, even if, Doug, you want to go back a couple of slides?
Because at the beginning, Doug said we were up 40, so I didn't know if we were up.
He's saying now, he's saying in reality now-
Okay.
-students enrolled in the district now, here in March of '23, are up versus where we were last October.
Okay.
The state's not a moving target. The state takes October 1 and rolls that forward. But I think Doug's reporting, if I'm correct, where we are today as far as enrollment, at how that has grown.
It's higher than the number that was cited in our Chapter 70 note.
Like, 40 higher.
I want to say maybe-
I think you said 40 or 42 or something.
All right, I just, okay.
And then that will continue to grow if we're, if we get the enrollment for the kindergarten that we're anticipating.
My point that I hope the committee would take away is that we're trending upward, is what it looks like, yeah.
Oh, yeah, well, we're also building a ton, so, yes, I know we're trending-
Well, we're not. The school committee has no authority over the building. Let's only take on what we can, let's not have that composite.
Well, when Doug was speaking, he's like, well, the K-classes are full, and, well, public school's never full, so I don't know what number you're using to say that we're full, you know what I mean? Like, so we're never full.
There is a classic guideline for K-.
Right.
About 22 in a class, and we're 22 across the board with potential for 23, which would require approval.
Okay.
But yeah, we don't kick anyone out.
So my last, my last question, and maybe we can explain this, is what, there's a bit of, we're in a contract negotiation year, so there's some number in this budget that accounts for whatever the increase is for salaries, and that in past three years was known, and this year, going into '24, it's not known. So I'm just going to use two random numbers. So let's say it's settled- So let's say it settles on, let's say we build 1% in the budget, but it, the contract settles on a 2% increase. Did then you come back and ask for more money, or we just overrun the budget? Does that question make sense?
It does, it does. Different districts do it different ways, right? And so the contracts are settled for an amount of time, usually three years, sometimes more, but usually three years. So if the district settles a contract for a given percentage, they would, most districts would try to distribute that increase year over year, so that it's not kind of a jagged cliff. It's not like, you know, this year, we conserve, you know, save some money. So we're at 2% a year one, but then in the following years, you have such large percentage increases, it becomes unmanageable. So most districts, and I think the practice in the state is to try to split it into thirds or fourths when possible, but thirds, so that there is a predictable space and time where you're paying it out over that time. Does that make sense?
It does, but there's already a number in here. So I'm saying if this is approved and we either come under or over, let's say we come under and you have extra money.
Yeah.
That's always what, like, when Christine was just talking, she's like, well, we had 65 teachers say that they were going to get their masters this year, but not, say, 30. But what we budgeted for 65, and only 30, where did that? I always wonder where the extra money goes. I'm always going to wonder, where did that money go?
That's a perfect question, right? Because what I always say is this budget is a forecast, right?
Right.
It's a forecast about what we know today. It's a forecast about the 602 FTEs that I'm currently paying on today's payroll. Tomorrow, I could have resignations. Tomorrow, I could have retirements. And that's always what's going to happen. We have people who take a leave of absence. I have to hire someone, a long-term sub, that's a bachelor's one. So in terms of extra money, if I have a resignation that happens in August, which happens sometimes, somebody goes to another district, and then we post, and then we hire. We hope to hire at a slightly lower rate than what that person was, but we're trying to hire the best possible candidates, the most qualified candidates. And sometimes it's more money, right? So we're always looking at how we're hiring and who's leaving and who's coming. So there's always.
There's a plus minus.
There's always this, like, right now, as of today, I only know of two teacher retirements for next year. So what I've done is I've budgeted a master's four, or master's five, I think I put in there, for that vacancy. Because I know that that salary that they're leaving is higher, and we're probably maybe going to get someone younger, someone right out of school, maybe someone with some experience. But you don't know who's going to fill that vacancy at that salary. So there is some attrition in that.
If I could add some, I think, maybe a little some specificity to your question. If, if the budget assumes a 1% increase and we agree on a 2% increase, to use the numbers that you put out, we could not agree to that increase unless we did one of two things. Either we agree to pull that additional 1% out of some other part of the budget, thereby reducing other services to apply that 1% elsewhere. Or, or I suppose in theory, we could go back to the town and ask for a fall appropriation, supplemental appropriation. That's pretty unheard of. And I necessarily wouldn't advocate that, but that would be the answer. We can either cut the budget to meet the need if we've underbudgeted, or we can seek a supplemental appropriation. But we, as you say, we haven't landed anywhere yet. So there's, you know, the first year, the negotiating year, is always the hardest to plan. Because it's, you do not have, you do not know what you don't know in terms of negotiating with the unions. Whereas the next two years, '25 and '26, they will be known.
Right.
We will have those and they will flow a little easier.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Michael?
Hey, so three points. First of all, I think we, all the school committee members have seen it's a very responsible budget. Two new hires, flat funding for non-personnel expenses, best guess at where things will settle out from a negotiating perspective, and that's obviously going to be somewhat fluid. So that's the first thing. And certainly, none of us as parents want to entertain anything draconian as far as our investment in our children. But we also have tax bills to pay, to your point, Amy, so I completely get that. So I think this year's budget, in many ways, accomplishes both to some extent. You know, it does assume that we are going to ultimately get to that 5.22% increase, a portion of which will be funded by the town, a portion of which we will fund from revolving accounts, or some other methodology. We have to figure out the exact amounts of that as well. But to me, certainly, cutting back on any resources in the school system to me is untenable and unreasonable, given the importance of this area that we supervise, you know, our children and our future. So that's Mike Padereau getting on a soapbox for just a minute there. So the funding mechanism will be flexible. We've been very open to the finance committee. Dan, Jim, Brian and others, talked to Steve as well. So I think it's been a very positive dialogue that we've had. And I think we've come back with a very reasonable proposal. But it's also important to note that this budget does not solve fiscal year '25. It does not solve fiscal year '26. The expenses are still going to be there. And how we fund those expenses going forward is a challenge that the next group of school committee and finance committee are going to have to resolve because the problem is not going away. We believe we found a solution that will work for this year, but there's much to be done on subsequent years to make sure that we continue to invest the way I believe we should for our children. So that's really all I had to say.
Thank you. Any other comments or thoughts? Laptop fell asleep.
I would just say, I would say thank you to the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee. Thank you to Christine and Doug for sort of, I don't really like the phrase "sharpening your pencils." I get, it's like one of those cliched things, but I, because it wasn't that simple. You did a lot of work. And I thought the 5.22 budget was reasonable. I didn't think it was grandiose by any stage. And, but I do understand where FinCom is coming from, sort of looking at the revolving stuff. But I'm one to like to say for a rainy day, and I always, you know, we talk about these one-time spends, and I'm like, that's exactly what spending out of the revolving account would be. It would be a Band-Aid for something that's a perpetual thing. And then what if it does rain? Like, what if you do have to come up with that cash? So I like playing it more cautious. But I think, in that light, I think you've struck a balance. And it feels even. I think you land on a number that I think FinCom has to be, you know, sort of happy. I think the dialogue was healthy. So for just everything that went into that, and knowing that it's still funding sort of what the district needs. So, yeah. Thank you for doing the work and I'm supportive of how we get to that place.
Kevin?
Echo very similar sentiments. You know, I think it's always just sort of have kind of outside views and perspectives on the budget. And, you know, not being a finance person myself, they're pretty dense sometimes. So I always appreciate Mr. Sherman's perspective throughout the decade, like forever. You know, the way that he approaches things. And I equally really appreciate the perspective, Christine, and expertise you're able to bring because I think there were some really good answers to some of those good questions. And I think it makes sense. And I stand by what I said, you know, however many weeks ago we met. I think that this is a really responsible budget. It's not a lot of frills, I think, as Mr. Padereau has said as well. I think it meets with what we need to do. And I appreciate the somewhat creative way that we can maybe lower the overall percentage, well, keep it the same, but fund it slightly differently. But I think this is really responsible. I think it's responsible to the taxpayers. And I think that it continues to support our budgetary needs to continue to have the type of, you know, school system that we demand as a town and as citizens, et cetera. So thank you, as Mr. Ingalls said, for all the work that you had done and the Subcommittee has done in light of the feedback that we got from the Finance Committee. And yeah, I continue to support this budget and think it's very reasonable.
Yeah, Kevin?
Yeah, from the educational perspective, I think that when people look at like 5% increase, a lot of people don't understand that special education costs is proportional to the rest of the budget. You know, it tends to be high. Like, special education costs definitely, you know, can be a big increase in any budget. And I definitely applaud that we're adding a special education teacher and also an EL teacher. So when I look at this, the way the budget's crafted, and when we're looking at the two positions that are being added, and looking at what we've done to reduce out-of-district special education costs, I think it's hard to argue that this is not a financially responsible budget. Because the two positions that we're adding are positions that are, you know, A, positions that we need, but also I think that, you know, go along with, you know, the financial priorities. So I think that, you know, and I know, I talked to Mike about this. You know, I think that even though this is, you know, I don't call it a bare bones budget. It's not like we're adding a crazy amount of positions. But I do definitely agree with the two positions that are added. You know, I think that that's a good place to, a great place to invest. So yeah, I agree with all my colleagues.
Any other thoughts or comments to share this evening?
I just, I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
5% is high, but I'm very conservative. So I'm happy that it's broken down and I appreciate the work that went into it because I was on the call last week. But I just, I guess I'm a little nervous, like, would you tell us at some point if this plan doesn't come to fruition and you say, guess what, we went back and we can't use the revolving accounts?
So just to be clear, we can't move revenue. We can't move revenue that's generated from a revolving account program to a local appropriation. That's not allowed.
Right.
What we're trying to do is work with the town and to work with these programs to say, should we move some of the IT services, like Tom was talking about, to these programs, to move the expenses from the local budget to the revolving account?
So for example, maybe Wakefield Academy would bill the IT department for their services? And you would pay them?
So it would probably have to be more about custodial services. If the custodian has to stay late, which he probably has to do, if there's overtime associated, that's why we really have to dig deeper about what would be appropriate to charge to a revolving account. But we don't have the authority to move revenue generated by a program to a source other than that program. I just need to be clear.
We can charge expenses.
We can charge expenses, right. So anything that the local budget is doing to support those programs, IT, custodial services, things of facilities nature, supplies, if any of the facility supplies are going to those programs. We can look at things like that that can help Tim O'Brien's department, that can help the IT department. Those are more appropriate.
The cost of energy, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. But in the past, those programs couldn't afford to do that. They were barely making any profit and just trying to sustain those salaries. So now we're trying to do that. But is it sustainable moving forward in the long run? No, no.
When I say 5% is high, I'm just, that's a general statement. I'm not saying that we don't need all of this money to run Wakefield Public School Systems, like, I'm not. But it's just, it's a big number, that's all.
It's also 600 employees. Right, there's no, I mean, you know, so if you were to just do a little math, right? Look at, you know, it's expensive to run a town, right? And so, you know, and I know Steve is under a tremendous amount of pressure with new growth and that's going in such a positive direction. And that impacts fire, it impacts police, it impacts other units, it impacts DPW, it impacts infrastructure. So, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts here. And, you know, schools are a big part of the budget. So it gets a different focus, right? And so, and, you know, we just, I think the relationships that we've developed with our FinCom liaisons is good. We don't always agree. And I think that that's good. And I think we're able to have some really candid conversations about these things that we're talking about, right?
No, no, it should be open.
And so, and I think, you know, and I think we're in a better place today than we were last week. And we'll be in a better place next week, right? And so that's where we're at. But, you know, I think this budget, and I think it's important to to have some takeaways or placeholders for the committee, right? So we have propped up our budgets, our school budgets for five years, going on five years now, using grant-related funds or state money or ARPA money or FEMA money. And so we've been more so fortunate to be able to get that support, right? But you need an exit strategy for that, right? You need an exit strategy, right? And so, and we're really just trying to create a budget that we think is sustainable, responsible, but also kind of supports the work that is being done in town, right? So like, we're kind of negotiating a contract, so are police and fire, right? And so, like, we're talking about labor being a priority, same conversation on the other side, right? So go one of us, so go all of us. And so that's an important piece, and so that's just, that's our position.
Okay. There aren't any other comments or thoughts to share at this time? We do have a motion, item 13C.
There we go. Move that the school committee approves the FY 2024 budget for the administration and operations of the Wakefield Public Schools in the amount of $50 million, 90,191, as presented in the proposal dated March 14, 2023, and to bring this proposal forward to the annual town meeting for further action.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, very good. Well, again, just to summarize what I think the members have already said, thanks. Thanks to all, starting back in the early days of the fall with the work that the administration and building principals and program directors and others do. The budget season gets earlier and earlier every year, does it not? So anyways, thank you to all for participating and contributing to what has been a, easily eight or nine-month process. From here, this information will be forwarded along to the Finance Committee and the Town Administrator, which we will then have a presentation and hearing and another conversation before the Finance Committee that is upcoming. That is on, I put it on the future dates, May, April 13, Town Finance Committee. So we will be before the Town Finance Committee with this budget that we've just voted on Thursday, April 13. So all members are obviously invited to that. But, so, okay. Moving along, Superintendent, do you have any comments or updates other than what we've already discussed this evening?
Already discussed them, thank you.
Seeing none, very good. No business gifts this evening. Move into Subcommittee Reports. Finance and Facilities. Mr. Padereau, anything you want to talk about with finance tonight?
I think we've covered that more than well enough right now. So our next meeting is going to be on April 13. So, no, we've covered it all already, thanks, Tom.
Very good, thank you. Labor and Personnel, just a quick update is that the negotiations with the WEA, Unit A Teachers Group is progressing. Our next negotiation is this Thursday evening. So we'll have another update for the committee probably next week or certainly the week after. Student Services, Ms. Lehman?
Yes, we met on Monday, March 20. It was a quick and efficient meeting. We were just still talking about how we want to meet with principals to discuss the survey data before we bring it to the full committee. So Kara and I are getting together this week. And then our next meeting is this coming Monday, April 3.
Okay, very good. Mr. Ingalls, Policy and Communications?
Sure. We met just last week. And we had a couple of things on the docket. We talked, we talked about our MASC policy book. We got our. we talked about our MASC policy book. We got our first draft of the changes. The committee, Subcommittee had gone over it. Most of it related to harassment and Title IX things, sort of boilerplate mass general law alignment, so aligning our policy with mass general law. And the folks over at the MASC, Mass Association of School Committees helped us sort of align that with our, our council's help. Out of everything that was presented to us, also within that was a wellness policy that had a few more questions about it. It was a little, some things that would be more pointed to Wakefield Public Schools. So we wanted a little bit more time with that. So we pulled it out. And we were gonna, I think, maybe at the, the next meeting, put the language on the table so that we can adopt that, that policy and just get our, our things revised. But that's where we are with that.
That's exactly.
Dr. Lyons, I believe. All right. Aside with that, we also talked about, and there is a motion on the table, to, to amend our, our officer, our board voting to place it after our town meeting. The idea being that, and I think it was funny that we had, we had two newish school committee members in the policy meeting with Eileen and Kevin, and even it hasn't been so long for me that I don't recall sort of the rush of a motion that comes after the election where it's like a sign, you know, it's a rush to sign up with Betsy at the, the town clerk and attend your first meeting. And then that first meeting, you vote for everything without sort of having the, the ground underneath you. So we were thinking if we, what, you know, what would be the benefit of maybe pushing that forward to after the town meeting? So that we sort of have all of the official business of the year tied up with our budget presentation at meeting? And then would that be a better time to, to sort of vote on board members? So we're looking to, to amend the language in the, in the policy that, that talks about seating board members to exactly reflect that.
Wouldn't you say board members, if I may? You mean officers.
Officers is what I mean. Yeah. So that would be the, the warrant signer, the vice chair, the chair.
And there's material in the, in the, in the packet this, this, this meeting for that. So the motion before us is to lay this proposal on the table for a vote at an upcoming meeting. Well, typically it would be two weeks, so that would be our, the 11th, yeah. So do we have a motion to that effect?
The next, the next school committee meeting is, we have, we have a-
We do.
We do.
No, but our next one's April 4th.
But that's not two weeks.
That's, that's not two weeks.
Oh, you want two weeks?
Well, the policy, the policy on amending policies is to be on the table for two, for two weeks.
Okay. That's fine. Do you want me to read the policy or you want me?
If you have it in front of you, that'd be great.
Oh, you want me to read it? Sometimes you read it when it's yours.
Oh.
Why don't you read? You do the honors and I'll second it. It was flip-flop tonight.
All right, all right. So move that the school committee place on the table for two weeks, consideration and vote at the April 11th, 2023 School Committee Meeting, the policy proposal on School Committee Officer Term as presented.
Second.
Any discussion on placing this on the table? Not on the merits of the proposal, just on placing it on the table? Okay. Motion made and seconded to place this on the table until April 11th. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, very good.
One, just last point of, of, that we talked about was the sitting of, of student members at our, at our table. And so I think we said it before, we, we assume everyone's okay with it. Dr. Lyons is going to reach out to, to some of the student advisors and see if we can maybe find a spot for, for two chairs at our table for students to sort of take part, ask questions.
But is there a policy? So we, we don't really talk about this.
Yes, okay. So let me, let me clarify.
Do they get to talk?
So we're, we're in the works of sort of making the existing policy a little bit more robust, but it feels like that's taking a little bit longer than is absolutely necessary. So in the interim, sort of to the spirit of the, you know, where we'd like to get with this, we could just put some, some chairs down and invite the voices to sort of take part in our discourse. And on the tail of that, hopefully within good time, we will have a policy crafted.
And do these students get voted in? Do they, someone assign them? Is this, is it fair? Is it equitable?
So that we have student members from student council. So they are, they are assigned to us, right? And so we would offer two seats and for the, the representatives that we have three, three or four reps, I think we have four reps now. So they would share the responsibility and, you know, two could attend at a time. And so they could attend at the beginning of the meeting. So we, we want to make it flexible and accessible to the kids. You know, if we have a four-hour meeting, maybe they leave at two hours or something to that effect. But, um, because they need to go home and do their homework and get to bed at a reasonable time and all that business. But we're just, we're just trying to think about, so this was, the, the prior structure had a student sitting on, at the table when I first arrived here. And so with COVID, with all that's transpired, everything's changed. Zoom has made everything different. Sometimes we have Lauren in the audience, sometimes we have, you know, Molly and, and Isabel only, you know, zooming in. And so, but we, we want to try to make it a more standard part of, of our work.
Yeah, just, just add on to that and answer Amy's question. The, the goal, the point of it would be that whoever the two student reps are who are sitting here, they would be sitting, they would not vote on anything, but they would be allowed to ask questions and make comments like any school committee member could. So like, for example, on the budget, like tonight, they will, for example, if we had a student rep here tonight, they could have asked a question on anything relating to the budget. So it, it is the idea of expanding like student participation on this body and to give student voice into any concern that the school committee would have upon them. So it, it is, it is the idea of not just them like sitting and watching for two hours, but that they could actually speak. Just to be clear. In terms of the selection process, like for next year, like right now, we already have them. So it'd be the current ones would be for this school year. That policy, you know, or like the, right now they're in conversations with the high school principal and, you know, trying to hammer that out.
There is, to answer your question, there is a policy that guides this?
No, I know there's a policy.
Correct.
I just want to add too, I think doing this will give a really cool perspective to have the students involved in the conversation, even just simply like, you know, when, when we have, you know, we're going to probably have something in the upcoming meetings about school safety and everything. And to have, I think a student sitting at the table with us and hearing from them, I think would just be a perspective that people don't normally hear. So I think it's really, you know, I like that.
Okay. Good. Anything, anything else, Stephen?
No, I think that's it.
That's it? Well, that's certainly, that's, as a hefty amount of business, you, you folks at policy, indeed you have. Indeed you have. You, you've probably been, been busier than the finance group. We better, we better, we better catch up.
I wouldn't say that.
So, okay, good. Our liaison reports. Any member, anything to share about their liaison functions?
I just have one thing. On Saturday, April 8th, at the high school up in front, there's the Wakefield Recycling and Sustainability Day. And the Environmental Sustainability Committee will be hosting a toy swap at our table. So they can bring up to three good condition, small to medium toys and they can swap and everything like that. So just wanted to put that out there.
It's great. That's great. And what was the date again?
Saturday, April 8th.
Saturday, April 8th. Okay, good. Okay, any other?
10 to 1.
10 to 1.
10 to 1 P.M.
In the high school parking lot.
In the high school, it says high school front.
Front of the high school.
Yeah.
Good. Okay. Any other liaison reports this evening? Okay, seeing none. Item 17, future dates and agenda items. Thought it might be good to just highlight what the next, say, month thereabouts looks like. And recall that in the calendar that we set back last summer, we adjusted April quite a bit to accommodate the election and bouncing election dates around, not the election date, but our, our follow-up meeting as well as April School Vacation Week. So our next meeting is actually next Tuesday and then the Tuesday after that. So we're meeting three Tuesdays in a row, which is in accordance with our calendar that we put out last summer. So April 4th and then April 11th, as I mentioned earlier, the Town Finance Committee meeting, in which we will represent and speak to the budget that we just voted this evening on Thursday, April 13th. Town meeting, excuse me, then the May School Committee Meetings get back somewhat on our routine schedule, Tuesday, May 2 and Tuesday, May 23. And then town meeting begins Monday, May 15th. Figured I'd throw that on there too. So we all, all put our town meeting on the calendar. Okay. So those, that's pretty much what the snapshot of the next month looks like, at least for the gathering of the seven of us. Yes, Amy?
For agenda items, do you think that we could vote on the logo before the new committee members come in?
That would be great.
That'd be great.
When we're meeting three weeks in a row, we're going to run out of things to talk about.
Do you think we've actually run out of things to talk about? We're not, we're not a group that-
So we, we have a draft logo.
Oh, good.
And it's, and I think it's being shared with the athletic department now to get feedback.
Okay.
So that's kind of where we are. That's where we are.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
Of course.
A good, great question. Yes, Stephen?
I would, I was hoping to get Alexis, Alexis Banzi on the agenda. I'm always going to butcher her name and I'm going to apologize whenever I get to meet her in person. But yes, if we could put her on the agenda for a presentation on school start times, that would be great.
Could have a family presentation, middle school update or a language update.
That'd be awesome. Let's do that.
Can we also add to the agenda the, the ask from the community member?
Of school safety?
Of school safety as well?
Yeah. Um, yeah.
I don't know when it would fit in, but I'm just-
No, I, I think it's important to do and, and, yeah. And, and we'll have conversation before that meeting as well.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. When is Jeff scheduled to come sit with us?
Technology.
I, I, it's supposed to be our first meeting in April, which is next Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah. He's, we've been kind of moving that a little bit. Yeah, yeah. That's the plan.
In his presentation, that'll, that will encompass cybersecurity a little bit, correct?
If he's working on that right now, he's working on kind of a, an assessment piece. So if he has more information on that, he'll share it. If it's still in the works, he might not be ready to share.
Okay.
Okay. Any other future agenda items that folks would like to see brought up? Okay. Well, certainly anytime, email Doug or myself and, and we'll get that, we'll get that interplugged in.
Do we have all the schools come in?
No.
Okay.
I think, yeah.
We did all the elementary in Doyle, right? Just not middle or high?
But, um, I don't know that we've heard from Galvin this year. Have we heard?
I thought we did.
I thought that was last year.
I think Meg was here last year.
Well, last year in the fall or last year in the-
She brought a now freshman. What's that?
Oh, that was, that was considered the-
It was the fall. It was this school year.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Uh, yeah. So.
Would Post ever come in?
It's a great question. I know a few students and adults that would love to come in.
Love to see them.
Yeah. That'd be great. It's a great idea. Yeah. That's a great idea. That'd be super fun.
Okay. Any other com, so any other future agenda items? Seeing none. Okay, moving on. Item number 18, School Committee Comments Going Around the Table. Anyone like to offer something? Mr. Bedrow?
Yeah, I, I knew you said it a little bit, Tom, but I wanted to recognize Doug, in particular Christine, you know, they got about eight million people shooting darts at them at all times about the budget over the course of a long period of time. And a lot of times it's contradictory, but they handle it with calm and grace and professionalism. And, you know, we wouldn't have gotten to this point tonight if not for a tremendous amount of work on their side. So I just wanted to thank you very much for all you've done to get us to this point.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Here, here. Here, here. Yeah. Any other, yes, Amy?
So, so Mike brings up a good point because I know I'm one that asks a lot of questions and they always answer it thoroughly and with a smile. So thank you. But at the end of the day, this budget is going to be approved at town meeting. So, so all the people watching, like if you feel strongly either way about this budget, then you would go to town meeting on Monday, May 15th and vote the way that you think it should be. That's all.
Yep. Here, here. It's two in a row. Any other, any other comments that members might like to share? Stephen?
I want to say thank you to the Parent University folks. Everyone that put that on, the, the, it culminated in the workshops at the Woodville this past Saturday. I went to two great presentations, one on sort of transitions to middle school and the second one on ELA curriculum, which I think I just got a preview. I think I got the Cliff Notes or something. Yeah, I think I'm seeing that again. And so I'll be excited. Now I'll be prepped with my questions. But I just always, I've been going to Parent University ever since it came out and it is, it's amazing. Like all these topics that you can sort of learn about, all these people that you can ask questions from, the community involvement, the community groups that came and set up in the cafeteria was amazing. There was a lot of people milling around the tables, asking good questions and, and good connections being made between like CPAC and WEF and like the Dolberg, you know, get, all the right people talking. It was fantastic. So thank you for the work that goes into that and please don't ever stop because it's such a great resource. And one other shout out, maybe not many people know, but the elementary schools are doing an ST Math, March Mathness Bracket. It's, it's amazing. And so I think it started with, maybe it was 64 classes and it started last Monday. And so every Monday, Wednesday and Friday, every class does ST Math for 30 minutes. And whoever has like the most puzzles solved as a class, they advance. And so it started 64 and now they're down to the final four. And so.
Who's in the final four? I don't know.
I know two of the classes are from the Woodville because my second grader is going up against a fourth grade class. And then, but I'm not sure, I only know that because she told me. So.
What, they win?
It's hopefully just bragging rights. I don't know. But, but just the, the curriculum coordinators, the, the stuff that happens that not everybody gets a glimpse into, all of sort of the magic that happens around the district is phenomenal. And in so many of these schools, like they, they were doing like read-a-thons and rolled right into a math competition, or some of them are doing it in parallel. And it takes like all of the educators to, to buy into this, to, to get that frenzied sort of environment that, that just makes learning infectious. And so thank you to everyone that does that, comes up with those ideas. Thank you to the people that make speeches for it. And thank you for the families that support it.
You have the final four, Kara? All right. Place your bets.
This just in.
Kindergarten at Greenwood, Ms. Rhodey Rhodey, Grade 1 at Walton, Ms. Daly at the Woodville and Mr. Bouchard at the Woodville. So honorable mention to Ms. Geary, Ms. Urban, Ms. Liberty and Ms. Reynolds.
So then it goes down to two next week and then a winner?
The two, so the four will, will compete tomorrow and it will be two on Friday. And so by Friday, and they're very close with the, the results. My understanding is the teachers don't necessarily know right away. It's sort of, it's a whole thing.
So next week you'll have an update of who wins?
So semifinal matches will take place on Wednesday and the finalists will have a match on Friday. An honorable mention will be calculated based on data pulled at the end of the day on Friday.
All right. We'll get an update next week.
Yeah.
Add it to the list.
It's, it's so awesome.
He wants Vegas time set, right? We'll have to get Jimmy the Greek to tell us exactly how.
I mean, you can bet Massachusetts.
Oh, that's true. We don't, we don't. DraftKings, yeah, we don't. We don't have to.
That's, that's what I had.
Margaret Patterson, our STEM coach at the elementary level, she's done a great job organizing that.
That's awesome. Yeah.
Very cool. Thank you, Stephen, for mentioning that.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Any other comments around the table? Yes, Kevin?
Yeah, I know, like probably every community has elementary school concerts. And so I went to the fourth grade concert because my kids in fourth grade. And yeah, at first, you know, I just thought, okay, I'm sitting through an elementary school concert. It's great. But the legit, when, I think it was Mr. Zini said that the entire class of whatever is, is on stage right now, the legit, like, well, a little of the music, just like put aside- the legit, like, well, a little of the music, just like, put aside the music for a second, but the sheer logistics of that event was really impressive, and so I just kept thinking, like, the entire night, I was just really impressed with the logistics of getting that many bodies, like, I've been involved in a lot of theater productions, like, high school level and all that. I mean, but this was just, like, over the top, so just give, uh, credit to the music department on the elementary school level, um, for, you know, putting that show on, you know, it's really, really impressive. That's it.
Okay, um, the one thing I, I will, uh, make note of at, at the end is both an update and a shout-out. Um, we, we probably heard, we, we were paying attention to social media on Sunday, I guess it was, uh, we had, uh, a number of students that were participating in the Coral that were sort of stuck in Florida, stuck in FLA. I don't make light of that, but, uh, we're, everything is safe and sound now, so, but, um, they had, they were, it was, it was a little touch and go there, and, and, and getting them home, there were some, some, some glitches with airlines and, and lots of things, and I know that the team of, of teachers, uh, and the parents were, were in touch with what was going on back here, and providing necessary supports to, uh, to raise the temperature a little bit on the airlines to do the right thing. Uh, one can decide for oneself if the right thing happened or not, but at the end of the day, the students were got a, uh, got a whole, got accommodations to stay an additional evening, and everyone got home, uh, safe and sound, so that's the good news, right, regardless of all the the challenges that Sunday brought for our, for our students and our staff that were, that were part of the Coral group, but certainly a shout-out to, uh, Aunt Anna Morrell and to Bill Hrazar as, uh, parents, active parents in the group who were just stayed on top of this throughout the entire, uh, the entire process, unrelentless, uh, in making sure that, um, that the airlines knew that this was an unacceptable situation, um, as well as obviously to our performing arts director, uh, Mr. Bankard and the team. So, just wanted to say that it was a di- a difficult day, Sunday, if some of us were in the, in, in the mix on that, a number of students were seniors and they were, you know, my son's friends, so I was, uh, you know, aware of some of that, not, he wasn't part of the group, but, um, not, but nonetheless, it all came together nicely, and everyone's safe and sound after a stressful time, but, uh, but, but thanks to those that, uh, that, that brought it all together. Okay, seeing, uh, no other comments at this time? Who, who bet on, on nine oh one? Anyone? You guys, uh? Christine had nine oh one, you had, you had nine oh one, all right. Anyways, Madam Vice Chair, we have a motion.
Yes, move that the school committee adjourn its meeting on Tuesday, March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Good night, and have a pleasant tomorrow.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Mike.
Bye, Mike.